Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, December 19th, 2016. I ask that you please rise for brief invocation, allowed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we meet for the last City Council meeting of the year and on the beginning of the Christmas week, we are ever mindful of the many blessings that have been showered upon our community. Certainly, there's been wide visibility of it in recent days with the huge success that we've experienced with our toy drive serving over 600 children in our community who would have otherwise had a lesser Christmas. We are also ever mindful of the many volunteers and people that are here to promote our town and do nice things, and many people want to be remembered just as Mr. Anonymous or Mr. and Mrs. Anonymous. And so, as a result of that, we just have a lot of things to be thankful for. Tonight also, we want to just briefly remember a member, a former member of our community, Craig Sager, who lost his battle with cancer this past week. He certainly was a nationwide recognized figure in sports broadcasting, and one of the wondrous things about Craig was he never forgot. He lived in Batavia, Illinois as a kid and graduated from Batavia High School in 1969, and he was always there to sing the laurels and the praises and the enthusiasms of Batavia wherever he went. And so, we want to remember him in our prayers and his life and its positive impact that it had on not only those in Batavia, but through so many others throughout the world. Tonight, we just ask for direction and understanding as we act on the various items of business before us, knowing that we're all here tonight to do what is in our best hearts and minds to serve the community of Batavia. We also want to remember those from our community who are serving in foreign soil in defense of our liberties and just ask that during this holiday session, season, a special blessing be showered upon them and all those serving with them in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman, Rizado, would you leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the City Clerk to please call the rolls.
Brown?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Atech?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chantet?
Wolf?
Here.
Savadi?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Muttler?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Boderman?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all 14 members of the City Council have answered the roll call. The City Attorney advises me, we should have a motion by the council to allow Alderman Chantet to attend and vote at the meeting by the telephone. Is that correct? Okay, we have a motion of a second. Savadi, and a second by O'Brien. Kirk, call the roll, please.
Savadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Muttler?
Here.
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Boderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Savadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Muttler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Boderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Savadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Muttler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Boderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, noes. Now, nobody's absent because Alderman, Chantet, you are allowed to participate in the meeting by the actions that have just been taken. So, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right, moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed in tonight's agenda. Alderman, Atech, do you have anything?
I do not have anything tonight.
Anybody else?
Your Honor.
Okay, moving to five, the consent agenda. Alderman, Atech?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Accept and place on file historic preservation minutes for November 14th and 28th, 2016, November 2017 building report. Approvals, December 16th, 2016 payroll in the amount of $789,359.52. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,731,359.11. Ordinance 16-77 tax levy SSA number 57. Ordinance 16-82 amending the official zoning map for a planned development overlay district at 607 South Jefferson Street. Resolution 16-95-R authorizing the sale of municipally-owned real estate at Wilson Street and Spuyler Drive. Resolution 16-94-R authorizing execution of the preliminary engineering services agreement for Prairie Street reconstruction project with Crawford, Murray, and Tilly Engineering in the amount of $277,927.66. Resolution 16-97-R authorizing execution of task order number 10 with Trotter and Associates. Resolution 16-98-R change order in the amount of $34,193.25 to the construction contract with Geneva Construction Company for 2016 street resurfacing program. Resolution 16-79-R amending Title IV, Chapter 5, Section 8(c) of the Batavia Municipal Code for the leaf and brush pickup fee. Resolution 16-80-R increasing the motor fuel tax and amending Title III, Chapter 23, Section 3 and Section 6 of the Batavia Municipal Code. Resolution 16-81-R amending Title III, Chapter 25, Section 7 of the Batavia Municipal Code. Resolution 16-96-R change order in the amount of $39,413 to construction contract with Portano Construction Company Incorporated. Approval of 2017 budget amendment deletion. I move that the consent agenda be approved as read.
Second. Move by Alderman, Atech, second by Alderman, McFadden, to amend the agenda to reflect item number D to be increased by $15. Is that what?
No, it's not.
But it increased by the amount listed on the printed agenda.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Kirk, call the roll, and the motion to amend.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Savadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Muttler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Boderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Fourteen yes, noes, and absence.
So, I'll move that we approve the consent agenda as previously read and then amended. Second.
Move by Atech, second by Stark, for the approval of the consent agenda as read and then amended. Any discussion further? Kirk, call the roll.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Savadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Muttler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Boderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Fourteen yes, noes, and absence. Okay, moving to item six, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Nothing. Moving to item seven, Main Street Minute. Do we have somebody from Main Street? I don't see. Okay. Okay, moving to item eight, which is the appointment, or it's a reappointment of Thomas Laland and Thomas Goslin to be members of the Batavia Plan Commission and zoning board of appeals. So, move.
Second.
Move by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman McFadden, for the approval of the reappointments. Kirk, call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Savadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Muttler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Boderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion for confirmation of the reappointments. Is it confirmed by a vote of fourteen yes, noes, and absence? Moving to item number nine, which is resolution 16-99-R authorize an interfund loan from nonutility funds? Alderman, Atech?
This resolution is a slight amendment of the resolution that we talked about at the Committee of the Whole Meeting last week, authorizing an interfund TIF loan from any utility except for the electric utility, and it will be in the amount of 1.5 million in order to pay for cash flow on some of the purchases that will be put into TIF I, and it should be paid off within the next five years.
Let's see.
Yes.
I think you misspoke there.
Not TIF I.
Nonutility funds.
Oh, nonutili, okay. Non, I'm sorry.
The loan could come from any nonutility.
Okay, you're right. I meant nonelectric utility and any nonutility funds. Thank you.
And it actually, excuse me, does list the funds that are allowed to lend it.
Okay. The workers' compensation fund, the city hall capital fund, the fire capital development fund, or the general fund. So, it could come from any of those funds.
And obviously, the big one that's before us is the purchase of the Larson Becker property.
Right.
So, everybody knows that. That's what. Any discussion?
I'll start off. We went through this at our last meeting, and I think, especially with the listing of what we've got from Peggy for the next four funds that we can take the money out of, I have a lot of trouble with several of those. One, this should be nothing more than a simple loan from one of our funds, the one that has the most money in it and has the easiest time absorbing a loan. It would not in any way jeopardize the reserves of the electric utility. I just, you know, we pay somebody a lot of money to be a financial advisor to us and to maintain and manage the finances that the city has, and her recommendation to start with was to take it from one place with the least amount of risk to that fund. If we were to pull it all from the general fund, I have a real problem with if that affects any way, shape, or form us going out to bond out for $15 million, and that hurts or costs us any money, anybody that votes to do it that way is a fool. We are here to try to maintain, the best of our ability, the money that we're entrusted from our citizens, whether it be tax money or revenue collected by our utility. And to jeopardize the general fund and its ability to bond out money at the lowest possible rate, to me, is just a foolish move. The simplest, the easiest way is to take this money out of the biggest reserve we have, pay it interest at or above what it would be making in any other investment that's out there, and then pay it off over five years. That's what was proposed to us originally. Half of us couldn't agree to that, and now we're in this situation. And if you think you're going to have a hard time explaining to somebody why we borrowed money from the electric utility, explain to them why we're borrowing it from the other funds that are listed there. I just think we're taking three steps back, you know, we've got money in different pockets. Why do we have to go into four different pockets to be able to take the money when we can do it with one, be done with this, and not have any risk? I just think that this is just a really simple decision, and we've muddied it up with, we're worried about two or three people's perception in this city, about what they're going to say on Facebook or anywhere else about where we're borrowing money from. In all reality, only because Peggy maintains such high standards, she didn't even have to come to us to do this. She could have just transferred the money and paid the loan out. No one would have known. It wouldn't have been any problem. It wouldn't hurt anything. It wouldn't have damaged anything, and we'd have no risk. But yet, we've decided to turn this in to something that I think is just foolish. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I understand exactly what you're saying, and I agree with you to some extent, to a large extent, I agree with you. It's a function of bookkeeping, of accounting. But, you know, we've told the people of Batavia that our electrical utility was in dire straits, and so, we raised the rates on them. And then, we're telling them, well, now we're going to start lending the money out. We're not a bank. And I just think it's a bad message we're sending to the people of Batavia. I mean, if we have that much money, maybe we should give people money back. I mean, it's their money. So, I, and I know what you mean, Alan. Believe me, that was a tough call for me to make. I mean, I know exactly what you're saying, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, but it's just sometimes perception is reality, and the people of Batavia have been taking it on the chin for a long time, and that's just, that's why I voted against it. And so, I just, I opposed you on the vote. But I believe, I know exactly what you're saying, and I agree with you, but I just, I just think the people, maybe we should give the money back, because the people of Batavia have been taking it hard, and...
But this is an investment of the capital money that we have as capital reserves. It's not due to the rate structure or Prairie State or anything else that the utility has problems with. This is basically, it's money that's now been freed up because we've done the right thing with the people's money, and we've gone out and refinanced bonds which have reduced the ability, or allowed the ability for that money to be used and not restricted in those funds.
No argument, you know? It's just, it's still the people's money and just perception. And we got an awful lot of money now, and for a while, we were struggling. And, you know, people are still struggling in Batavia. It's still theirs to it.
I don't disagree with that. What I disagree with is, is we can't answer the question if we take the money out of the general fund if it's going to harm us in the future. And when we have to go out and bond out for $15 million, and if that changes it by a percent, then what do we do with that? Do we have everybody else in the city pay for that? Because we were too foolish, and we went out and had to borrow money outside rather than do it internally? Do we have it?
Well, can we reevaluate it at that time? And if it is indeed going to affect our credit rating, can we go back and borrow from the electric utility? I mean, if we get to that point...
I don't even know why we have to ask that question when we have a simple solution in front of us that we can do.
Well, I think it's, for me, it's what Mike has said. That's why I'm asking the question, because I have the same concerns.
Well, I think you're just saying, the easiest way to explain it to a rate payer is the money's being invested. Instead of us going outside of the city to invest that money that's in the reserves, we're investing it in the TIF, and the TIF is going to pay it back and pay interest. It's no different than if Peggy went out and bought a CD and let it sit there for five years.
I understand that, but I also understand that the ratepayers have been paying a lot for electric utility, and now we have quite a bit of free money in the electric utility.
It's not free.
Well, not free, but available.
And it will be spent by the utility.
Available at this time.
Let's keep in mind that we're talking, what, there's $18 million in the reserves in the electric utility? And it's a forty-some million dollar a year utility? So, $48 million a year utility, $18 million in reserve isn't a whole heck of a lot of money to have in reserve. So, even though it's a chunk of money, it's not money that's just laying there that I feel is, oh, we can just, you know, loan out to a different fund. I understand what Alan's saying. We all, I think, sitting around this table, understand what each other is saying, but I think it comes down to, are you going to vote for it? We had the vote at the committee meeting. We need to have a vote tonight, and I'm going to vote in favor of this resolution we have in front of us.
I'm telling it.
Yeah, I was just like to, I understand the part about what we're talking about with money and where it's an accounting error and so on and so forth. If it was just about an accounting error, it shouldn't matter where the money comes from. You can take it out of this pot, or you can take it out of that pot, if it's truly about an accounting error. But...
Right.
No, 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 no. Not an accounting error.
Function.
Accounting function, thank you. If it was just an amount, the accounting function, then that's all it would be. All we're trying to do is pay for something and find out what we believe individually is the most responsible way about doing it. There is what you're saying. You can believe that as to that point of view. However, there's another point of view that the, it is what Dave was saying. The political capital part of it is not to be squandered lightly either. We have a lot of function, or a lot of projects in the near future where people need to see that we're thinking things through, and we're thinking things through in different types of ways. And sometimes, that means that we think like they think on some things, and if it, if it costs what you're saying, we don't even know what the number is, if it costs more or less, well, it could cost more or less in other things that we butt up against with trying to get other projects through, and there's always two ways to the other side of the bridge. You can either go straight, and there's a wall there, and just bust through the wall, or you can find another way to go around it that puts up less resistance. I just happen to believe that the logical way for me is to not take it out of the utility at this point in time, and that's just my thinking.
Alderman, McFadden?
The money that's in the reserve fund, when, if it's just sitting there, it's not just sitting in account, it's probably invested somewhere, right?
That's right.
And the kind of things that it's invested in are probably very safe things, but are any of them time constrained where it's not exactly liquid?
Yeah, it's time your reserve fund, you're, all of our investments are time constrained.
Okay, so, it would be invested somewhere else with the timeframe or invested with us with the timeframe, and in the case of it being invested with us, we pay interest on it, but we get the benefit of that interest as well as opposed to somewhere else. To me, it makes the most sense and is the most responsible thing is to do it from that one fund, and I think I would have an easy time explaining it to anybody who asked. It's like, look, yes, there's, there's a bunch of capital reserves in that fund. It's not excess money, but there are capital projects that are going to happen that's going to get used for it, and if we gave it back, as was suggested, and we come, comes time when we've got to take on those capital projects, all of a sudden, we, we need that money, and we then either have to go ask people for it in the form of a rate increase or find somewhere else to pull it from. So, for me, it makes the, I'm going to support, I would support just using the money from our best funded fund and doing it like that.
Alderman, Serone?
I would agree with that. We're making a mountain out of a molehill, but the one thing, Marty, you had said, that it's time that we start thinking like them. Have you talked, I mean, typically in situations like this, you're out there talking to people, have your constituents said they're concerned about using one fund over another, or do they really not even know what's going on?
No, it's about, I think it's about what, the way that Dave was funding the points. And I think it was the way it was explained last week. I don't know who made the point. I couldn't see while I was talking on the phone. Yeah, you can explain anything, and somebody had mentioned, well, you're going to pay your mortgage this month. It's just as simple as paying your mortgage this month on your credit card. You know you're going to pay it back next month. Well, sure, you can do that, but you can also take it out of savings and not go through the drama of trying to explain, well, why, if you've got the money, why are you trying to pay on, on your credit cards instead? It's just...
Drama? You've got 3,000 miles now for nothing. It's a no-brainer, again.
Again. This is just, this is just a philosophical point of view. You take the vote and just, it'll be one way or the other way.
Anybody else?
I would. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, the couple of conversations I had around this one, and I definitely wrestled with this several times over the week, just trying to look at it from a fresh angle each time, I definitely don't want to see us have to go out to a bank and, when we can protect our money, pay ourselves back in the long run, and not just end up spending money to a third party, a bank out there, when that money should rightfully be staying with us. But I also, I have a very hard time, and I think this is because it's really, to me, a separate problem, we're borrowing from a fund, whether that, sorry, whether that's because, you know, bonds matured and we're able to collect on them or not, the perception is real. We had a fund that was in dire straits. Citizens got hit with a rate increase. To the single mother, to, you know, the people up at Homestead, that's, those are big deals. And now, we're saying that we can look at this account and see enough there to borrow 1.5 million from? There's, there's a different something going on there that I'm, I'm going to vote against this, taking it from the electric fund, to be, to be clear. Sorry.
I need to add something. It's an investment. I'm not encouraging you to change the resolution. It's fine, these funds have sufficient money to move forward, but it's an investment, and the electric utility has money, it's a capital, and that money will be invested in something else. We'll just invest it in a CD, or, as I mentioned before, we want CDs, neither bonds, and those are invested by the electric utility, because the funds don't stay idle while we're holding the investment to make a return. So, that's what this will be for. So, we can propose to your, we will, we'll get those other funds we want to work together.
Alderman, Stark?
The thing that concerns me about this discussion is, we know that in the future, we will have rate increases, and I don't want people to think that because we have $1.5 million now, that we could take out to lend ourself, that that means we've got so much money, we've got excess money just floating around that we're going to be able to use to offset any future rate increases, and we know that that's not the truth. So, that's, that's why this is kind of, it's like, it's, this money did not come from ratepayer funds and us overcharging ratepayers. It came from wise restructuring of our debt. So, that's why, to me, it sounds a bad message when we're saying, oh, we should think about giving the money back to the ratepayers, because the next time we have a rate increase, everybody's going to say, well, wait, you had $1.5 million that you said maybe we should give back, and so, to me, it's, this is not going down a good path.
Savadi?
I understand the political capital issue. I get that and the perception. We have a fiduciary responsibility to, to our community, and given that, you know, what, what Susan said was, was true, there's, there's not, we're not refunding money here. that we could take out to lend ourself, that that means we've got so much money, we've got excess money just floating around that we're going to be able to use to offset any future rate increases. And we know that that's not the truth. So that's, that's why this is kind of, it's like, it's, this money did not come from ratepayer funds and what, and us overcharging ratepayers, it came from wise restructuring of our debt. So that's why, to me, it sounds a bad message when we're saying, oh, we should think about giving the money back to the ratepayers, because the next time we have a rate increase, everybody's gonna say, well, wait, you had a million and a half dollars that you said maybe we should give back. And so to me, it's, this is not going down a good path.
Savani?
I just, I understand the political capital issue, I get that and the perception. We have a fiduciary responsibility to, to our community. And given that, you know, what, what Susan said was, was true, there's, there's not, we're not refunding money here, this is something that needs to be invested. It's gonna be invested in Geneva, it's gonna be invested somewhere. We might as well invest it in ourselves, get our rate of return back. It's, it's simply, it is an accounting function, pure and simple, pure and simple. And if we minimize the exposure of our community paying more money by having to go to the bank, then we do it. Simple. I would rather explain that we're saving money by doing this and not having to pay more. Period. It's gonna be invested somewhere.
And I think we have to remind ourselves that this is not part of the operational funds of the electric utility. This is reserved, this is part of the capital investment funds of the utility. It is not the operational funds. The operational funds are what the problem's with. That's what we have the problem with our utility, is the operational funds. We're spending more money on our electricity than what we can charge for, or what we can sell it for, what we don't use, and that's where their problem is. And I think that's something that we have to keep in our minds when we discuss with people, you know, what the realities are of having reserves in a fund like that.
Peggy, you have a question? The money that this would be coming from, did that come from taxpayers, or did that come from ratepayers?
This would be from the general fund, it would be various revenue sources.
No, I'm sorry, if the money was to come out of the electric fund?
Oh, if it were...
Was that only paid by electric ratepayers?
That is money that the electric utility has for investment. So although it's called an interfund loan, it's really an investment.
How did we get to eighteen million dollars?
That is the reserve that we have on hand, because of the debt restructuring that we did at the end of 2015.
And I guess, along the lines of not just being about political capital, if this is a capital improvement, should come from the general funds. That's where the money came from, that's where people are putting their money into, so it does seem like we would be doing that. We're not using the electric utility to collect electric rates and electric monies to spend on something electric-related. We're not doing that with this one. We're using electric funds collected for that purpose to pay for something else. Just my thinking is, being the general fund, it is more in line with the way that that money was created and for being transparent. I know it can be done, but it doesn't mean that it should be.
I guess the thought I would have is, is that, given that there is obviously a lot of interest on the part of the city council on this, maybe what I guess we, I would request is that we'll ask Laura and Peggy to maybe prepare some type of a report that you could give us maybe at the end of every quarter, that would kind of just say the status of all these funds, and where they're, what funds we've used for whatever monies and whatever. I think the council wants to have their arms wrapped around this maybe in a greater detail than they have previously.
It is provided in the months we've been in the county, but we can provide maybe a more in-depth investigation.
I'm thinking that, yeah, I think what would be helpful is if, if you could come, you know, maybe every quarter, and just take ten minutes at a cow meeting and say, okay, here's the status of all these funds, and this is where we're at, and so everybody can see where these electric funds are, and how much that is growing or depleting, and, you know, what we've used, what funds we've used this money for, and how that's all coming together. I think that would be a wise course of action here, given the, the interest that the council has. Any other discussion? Well, we have a, a motion and second on the floor for the approval of resolution...
Did I make a motion?
Nope.
Not yet.
I'm not sure I made a motion.
You haven't made a motion.
Okay. I recommend we approve Resolution sixteen dash ninety-nine dash R, authorizing an interfund TIF loan.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Botterman, was it?
Yes.
For the approval of Resolution sixteen dash ninety-nine dash R, authorizing an interfund loan from nonutility funds.
Can I ask one question before we proceed? Peggy, in, in your, moving forward at this point, does it matter which way we move forward, or do you still, would you still recommend taking from the electrical fund?
This should be fine, as presented.
Okay. And there's no, no negative risk at all to a bond rating or anything like that?
I don't think there should be, but I would certainly bring it up to, I will bring it up to the financial advisor and bring it back to you. Shouldn't we say that we should have it postponed back to, so that there's sufficient time to have a discussion?
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I think it's points like that, that I would anticipate we would have in this ongoing review that we're talking about every quarter, so that would give everybody in the council an in-depth, detailed idea of what's happening here. Other comments or questions? Kirk, call the roll.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
No.
Chantet?
No.
Wolf?
No.
Savadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Metzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botterman?
Aye.
Serrano?
No.
McFadden?
No.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
That vote is... That vote is nine yes, five no. It's motion approved. Okay, moving to item number ten, which is Resolution sixteen dash one hundred dash R, authorizing execution of lease termination and general release with clear wireless. We've got this one.
This would be mine.
Alderman Wolf?
This is for a building that's out on the west Main Street Fire Station site that Clear Wireless has agreed to gift their former equipment shelter to the city at no cost. They basically combined with another wireless provider that has another piece of equipment out there in the building, and so they no longer need this building. So at this point, we would need this resolution to pass to be able to take possession of that. Anybody have any questions?
We think we, I'll just offer, we think we have some needs in the community that we could use this building for. We may have some leftover toys, for one thing, from the past week's activities, and we need to move that relatively quick. That may be one thing we would do here, just to see...
And I would think, moving into the future, that I think that there'll be somebody else that'll be interested in this for the purpose it was originally intended for...
Right, right.
Where we would, again, then be using, space on the water tower for another antenna.
This would just be an interim thing, but for the moment, I'm just suggesting we've got uses that are there. And I guess I need a second, we had a motion.
Oh, a second?
Motion and second. Alderman Atack?
Gary, are we seeing demand for these type of antennas now? Is there still the same demand there was in the past, just out of curiosity?
Just, I think it was about eighteen months ago that the city approved a tri-party agreement for another carrier that was coming in, and one carrier that was going out. So the industry still is evolving, as you said, there's, there's other technologies coming up too. So I wouldn't say to you that there won't be any demand for this building. Somewhat at some point in time, they very well have demand for this building.
Other comments or questions? Kirk, call the roll then, and Resolution sixteen dash one hundred dash R?
Wolf?
Aye.
Savadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Metzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botterman?
Aye.
Serrano?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet? Chantet?
Alderman Chantet? Must have disconnected. So that vote is thirteen yes, no-no's, one absent. Okay, moving to item number eleven, the administrators' report.
I guess I've got a report that, um, we need the coordinator position, we received forty-four applications, and many of them were right from our own community. Today, we interviewed five candidates, and tomorrow, we'll interview four more. Um, from the police departments, shot whether it's gonna be a cop or firefighter fundraiser is gonna be at Walmart tomorrow from six to eight P M., and they usually shop with about fifteen families there. The city hall and police departments are user warming centers when the temperatures reach into the single digits and minus digits as they have the last few days, and that's demand by adult personnel. Uh, the Windmill Manor project, just wanted to let everyone know that their current is ready for issuance, subject to the payments of fees and contractors' information. Uh, also, plan revisions ongoing for the proposed new spec warehouse distribution building at nine oh one Douglas, at the northeast corner of Douglas and Red Apple. Um, and then at one oh nine, south Batavia property, it was formerly the flower shop, that was recently sold to Batavia Family Dentistry, Ken Corbin, and remodeling plans and facade grant requests are pending for this business relocation that was previously located at two thirty-nine West Wilson. Uh, internally, we took a look at five different designs for parking at the Larson Becker property, and, uh, we found one that maximized the number of parking spaces at a hundred and nine spaces as the best alternative. Also, wanted to provide you with an update of the water main remodels at Kirk and Batavia that is, um, the result of the Kane County Road Program at that intersection. And we've received some, some good news and some bad news. According to the county's engineering consultant, the cost to relocate our water mains there will be closer to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars versus the one point five million that had previously been estimated. Also, the project has been delayed to twenty eighteen, which is good news for the twenty-seventeen budget, where it's just a delay that, that expense will then occur in twenty fifteen. The, the bad news is that the county has not changed its position regarding property acquisition for the water main relocate, meaning that if they do not acquire the rights of way further out, there may be the, the situation down the road where they buy the road further, and then you would have to move our water main again. So we're trying to either get them to commit to a watering that right of way, or agreeing with us in some manner that perhaps the cost of this water main locate is on us, but if in the future, the water main would need to be relocated, that there would be, that that cost would either be on the county's share. Um, and that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Alderman Botterman?
I did have a question, not related to what you've just shared with us. What I was curious is, this is our final meeting for, for council for twenty sixteen. A few months back, we received a report or an update from the attorneys in Chicago who are looking at our agreement with Prairie State, and I was just curious what, what is happening with that? And I don't necessarily looking for an answer tonight, but if we can schedule something for January...
Absolutely. It's already in the works. In fact, what happened, what we were gonna have been coming in December, but there ended up being a conflict with that, so I thought perhaps it's... Gary, do you remember the date in January?
I thought it was the seventeenth. Is it that?
Yeah, that's on the...
Okay, thank you.
So you are then... Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, committee reports, committee development, Alderman Brown?
No report, Your Honor. No meetings to announce, other than the next, the very next meeting that I think we're gonna be having will be the Plan Commission meeting scheduled for January fourth at seven thirty P M. There is no committee of the whole meeting or other committee meetings between now and then. All I have.
Government services, Alderman Atack?
There is no report this evening.
City services, Alderman Wolf?
Um, no report, but just a reminder to everybody, when you're piling up snow out on the parkway in front of your house, make sure you don't bury the fire hydrants, or if you get a chance while you're out digging out on the curb, make sure you open up any of the drains that are out there. So if it does ever melt, it'll have a place to go.
Public utilities, Alderman Brown?
Uh, no report, Your Honor.
Okay. We have other business? Anything else? Okay, for the mayor's report, a couple of quick things. We ended up at the Access Toy Drive this year, serving over six hundred and, I think it was six hundred and twenty-three kids. We did a lot a week ago Sunday, and then last Wednesday night, they had another fifty-six in that night. And then things got kind of interesting this weekend, because both Roy Bailey and myself started getting calls from out of town. And we had people from other communities wanting to know if Batavia Access would stretch our distribution so that we could handle, in one instance, they were requesting that we handle twenty-five families from another town. And so we had kind of a brief meeting of the, of those involved, and we made the decision that, you know, we, this has been a commitment by Batavians for Batavia, and, you know, you open this thing up and take it in all kinds of different directions, and we could have all kinds of additional people standing at the doorstep here. So we had, we basically had to turn everybody down, and at the end of the day, we really didn't have that much stuff left in our inventory to have handled that kind of volume. But I guess I, I think this is a good thing, because it allows us to appreciate that, you know, we're doing this, and apparently there's some of our neighboring towns that aren't, and there's a lot of people that are feeling the need there, and unfortunately, you feel for them. And I guess there's been some problem with some of the other high-profile child toy distribution programs at Christmas in the region this year. And we seem to have been the one that went through with raising colors and got it all done successfully, and everybody was taken care of, and so I think we should pat ourselves on the back for another job well done, and that we took care of Batavia people. So we should leave here tonight feeling good about that. Another interesting kind of sidebar story, this past week, the Batavia Fire Department responded on a mutual aid call out to Sycamore. Now, I'm not sure, in my knowledge of, and I, as you know, I know something about that organization. I don't know if we've ever been to Sycamore before. I don't think we've ever, we've been to DeKalb, but I don't know if we've ever been to Sycamore. Anyway, what we went to Sycamore for was kind of an interesting story, because, bone behold, come to find out, it was the home of former Batavia Alderman Dave Waters had been, had been caught on, had caught on fire, and he lives in a fairly large, some describe it as a mansion structure on Route twenty-three, just north of the DeKalb County Courthouse on Main Street there. And apparently, there was some contractor doing work in the house and started a fire, and they, they apparently had quite a fire. Chief, did we work that fire, or did we stand by?
No, we worked it, we were there for quite some time.
Yeah, so if any of you remember, so, I don't know if any of you were here when Dave Waters was on the city council or not, he was the first ward alderman. And I think you, Alderman O'Brien, may have replaced him.
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
I, Jody, I replaced Jody.
Okay. So anyway, I just share that with you, that that happened to somebody that used to be on the city council with us. Just to end up, I guess I wanna wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And certainly, it appears that Batavia has a lot of interesting development projects kind of on the horizon in Batavia. And what I find most interesting is, is that our two premier neighbors that are part of our, I guess I would call it part of our community, one being Fermilab, and the other one being Mooseheart, are both, have a lot of discussions going on about, I think, some exciting things happening on both of their sites. And so, while I guess they're not ready to talk publicly about any of them yet, there's very interesting projects that are being put together. Fermilab, as I think I reported during my time before the Batavia Chamber of Commerce, they've got, you know, a program going there now that they're gonna build this new accelerator, and hopefully, they're going to be attracting a lot of foreign investment into it. And I guess that should be something that will be very interesting to Batavians, because most of the construction, so we are being told, is gonna happen south of the Pine Street entrance, between there and the bike trail bridge that goes over Kirk Road. That's, that area going east there is where a lot of this is gonna take place, much of which, I guess, is gonna be underground. But they're talking well over a billion dollars in construction, so that's not gonna be a, kind of a light thing to happen, and we're looking at, so supposedly, maybe two thousand new jobs out there when it's over with. So that's a very interesting project for us. I've gotten a lot of calls or inquiries from other mayors in the region wanting to know more about it, 'cause they think it could be a boon to the local economy, so we'll see. But again, it's very much in the preliminary stages, as it was fifty years ago last Friday, when that was the date it was announced that the, what they called then the Atom Smasher was going to be located at what was called Weston in northern Illinois. And Weston was a small subdivision out there on Warrenville Road... was going to be located at what was called Weston in northern Illinois. And Weston was a small subdivision out there on Warrenville Road, just over the DuPage County line, that basically was put out of business and taken over by Fermilab when they came in and took that 6,800 acres and made it into the facility that it is out there today. I think a point to conjure is, had that event not happened, and that 6,800 acres had been allowed in 1966 to go upon its way into what was going to happen with the remainder of the area out there. If you look at everything that's happened around Fermilab, whether it's in Batavia, Aurora, Naperville, West Chicago, you know, there's been a lot of stuff happening. I can only imagine that that 6,800 acres, if that had not been Fermilab, can you imagine what that would have been out there today? I mean, I think just the impacts on Batavia and the population that, you know, that would have probably generated east of Kirk Road would have made our town a much, probably a much different place than what we have here today. We obviously have traffic problems and school, you know, enrollment issues and whatever, but had that thing turned into a massive urbanization out there, it would be a much stronger and in-your-face type situation today than what it turned out to be. So I guess from a historical perspective, I would judge that Fermilab really was a very good thing to happen to Batavia because it helped us really kind of control our growth. And, you know, what's happened there has been very, seemingly very positive, and the people that work there are, many of them live in town and are very strong, nice people. And as I quoted one time in the Chicago Sun-Times, I have this hanging on my wall, my house, article that Fermilab is a great neighbor. It doesn't smoke, smell, pollute, turn on bright lights, make noise. And I think that's true. So we, I think, have something interesting to, number one, commemorate what happened 50 years ago last week. And we may have something more to commemorate 50 years from now about what happened in September when they announced they were going to go for a new, whole new program out there. So exciting days ahead. So Alderman Brown, I entertain a motion.
Move for adjourned the last city council meeting of 2016.
Second.
Moved by Brown, second by O'Brien. Kirk, take a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.